Item number three, discussion and possible approval of minutes from August 11, 2025. Commissioner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, discussion and possible approval of minutes from August 11, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Gary?
Yes.
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 I gotta run across street number one truck. Can we skip mine?
Yeah, can we skip mine and bring him back in?
Item number four, discussion and possible approval of minutes from August 12, 2025. Special joint commissioner, commissioners and exercise board meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Item five, discussion and possible approval of the tabled item for a flat map called Winter Ridge.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth? Yes.
Just got a place for the chairman.
Do you want to sign these too since I have them? And normally you don't, he normally doesn't do it like this, but sometimes we get them like this.
I mean, if they want to sit here and sign them all, but.
I can do it without them. You gotta.
That would be a little more.
Send it very good job.
I think. Of course, we have a new treasurer, but I will say that the treasurer used to wouldn't sign those, so. She signed them all?
Well, she signed them. He made a copy of this. He's for y'all something. It has everyone else's signature on it.
So the treasurer's signature is not on that?
Yeah, it is on here.
Oh, it's on that?
Yeah, it's just a copy of your four y'all.
As.
I guess he normally does it different.
Two places for you to sign here. We'll take that for the minutes.
We're not accepting.
Road maintenance. You could accept on this one because we're accepting the flat map.
We're not accepting.
Um, you could put, yeah, I would just put non-accepted road maintenance down here on the bottom.
I'll let it ride up here.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. She's signing too, sorry. Do we not need to sign them?
I thought you said no.
We don't, I don't need, I mean, I don't think we need to, as long as we sign that, we're fine with it.
Because that's what she's got filed. She's probably gonna make more copies of that one.
Right, that's what these are though.
Yeah.
He gave these to me thinking of Grace would sign them all today instead of me taking that back to him and making more copies.
But we need, but we'll.
But you'll need these.
Yeah, we'll need those.
We'll need those signed, right? So that was my question. Come back in some day.
Well, what, I'll just tell you the render procedure. What if they decide today is fine, but.
Normally it's.
They make copies of this. That way they're not signing.
Correct. That's what he normally does for me. And I don't know why he did this.
If we need to sign that, I don't mind.
Okay, yeah, yeah, sorry. He normally, I take them back to my office and then we rent more copies.
Yeah. He just did something different.
He did. Sorry about that. I won't, I won't take it back.
This just takes a lot longer.
It does. That's why it was.
You want to do all of them?
We have to watch all, all of them y'all. That's what we don't normally do it. That's why I don't know why he changed his mind. Sorry. It was, maybe it's.
Sort of copy something.
Never done this before.
I know, we do.
I guess so. Hey, John, did you look over those permits that we were getting?
Okay, item number seven, discussion and possible approval of final purchase. Item number four, number five?
Number six.
Oh, okay, discussion and possible approval of the final flat, a replat of lots 2328, Winter Creek Golf, the part six. You got all the same thing as she said.
One sheet for me and then I'll get something from the back.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Hang on, I can cover that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, item seven, discussion and possible approval of final purchase.
Gary?
Yes.
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 Item number eight, review purchase orders generated by the Grady County governing bodies during the current and previous months and authorize or deny payment of such purchase orders.
This is a partial payment from the sheriff's office to the Grady County jail authority for. Fifty thousand? Sheriff's Department purchasing, proper purchasing procedures were not followed. Work start date is before the PO. Zachary Scott, Hilda Brennan, stove repair, break room. It's a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Let's do the late dated. July 31st and the work started July 31st. Treasurer's Department, County Treasurer's Association, proper purchasing procedures not followed. Purchasing responsible for this transaction. PO should have been open July 1st. It's for the 2020, 25, 26 annual dues to their association of four hundred and fifty dollars. Rush Springs Senior Citizen, Lee, copier lease, proper purchasing procedures not followed. Invoice dated before PO. PO was dated eight, eight, invoice was dated seven, twenty-four. Rush Springs Senior Citizen, invoice dated before PO. AK Office Systems, printer and copier quarterly billing is dated eight, eight. PO and the bill was seven, eight. Rush Springs Senior Citizens. I don't know how to say this. Deosus USA for coffee and tea. Invoice dated before PO, one hundred and seventy-seven oh five. PO was August 11th. Invoice was seven thirty-one.
And they're working on getting on track on all of those.
Stuff.
Yeah.
They've had some turnover, turnover, turnover and some changes, so. Sheriff's Office, Kansas Turnpike Authority, toll fees, seven twelve. To seven thirteen, procedures weren't followed. It's forty-six, sixty-six. I thought Kansas came under Oklahoma, because when I traveled to Kansas, it's.
That's on your personal.
But on a county one, it's not?
On a county one, we only can travel, and I called and asked the guy and said.
Okay.
This was official business. We was picking up an inmate. Can this not be, no, we don't have that in our procedures.
So I wonder if we shouldn't get, I mean, I know y'all don't have to pay pipe passes in Oklahoma or Texas, but I wonder if we shouldn't get a pipe pass.
To have for you to travel out of.
Well, I guess it would have to go in that cert, special, that cert vehicle.
Okay, yeah. I, I knew my pipe pass with Texas and Kansas, so I was like.
Personal only.
Okay. So it's forty-six, sixty-six.
I'm just gonna make sure of it.
Transcorp prisoner, okay. Sheriff's Office, express tire and brake, invoice dated before PO, ninety-six, or three hundred and fifty-three seventy-five. Paying dated eight, twelve. The work was done eight, eleven. Public Health, Robbie Dale Music, spray around the building for weeds. Work was done before PO. Service done on eight, nine. The PO wasn't open till eight, twelve, two hundred dollars. Make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
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 Item number nine, discussion and possible action of the post emergency management director, Grady County Fire Department, safety director, Bill.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so I'm in eight days. I'm still doing Sydney's office. Haven't made any restrictions, so I'm proud of myself. So last week I met with Sal Baker at their location and our location, so part of my process is just to build relationship with everybody to include the citizens. Every business, every entity that does disaster and crisis management. Then he came to the office. Today I'll meet with District Six Health Department, Emergency Response Coordinator out of Holdenville, Blake Enos. And then Wednesday I'll meet with Oklahoma Medical Response Corps, Julia Reynolds, for our area. Um, and just keep working that. Ms. Kim was help. She's gonna get me the emails and names of all the fire department chiefs so I can send them a hello. And then my intention is to go to them where they work. That is how I think, just the same if you will come to your location and say hello. And then the meeting, Ms. Ruth had mentioned.
Kim, I mentioned that we've got a meeting tomorrow night. That might be.
I'll come say hello.
I also allowed them to put, to put Bill clock in and clock out on his phone because there will be times that he's gonna go to a meeting first and he's not gonna drive over here and clock in and then go to the meeting. So I did allow Jennifer call and ask if we got that.
Yeah, so I'm just making a lot of. Time to visit all kind of people and even the community alliance will be next week where there's so many different people that are there too. Because my thoughts are, in a crisis or disaster, everyone can be prepared and help a little. I even called Jane Lyon. They own Hometown Paper. She's a friend of mine. They have earth movers, so in my mind, if ours are down, they can help if something bad happens. So that's just my thoughts. I've just been working on that. That's all.
The other thing on community alliance, when you meet with somebody there, will you let them know if, they'll let us know when they call a cooling station or something at the soup kitchen? Only time I know is if I get on Facebook and see it and then I run to Dunn's and order something.
I'm the co-chair, so I'll make sure you.
Okay.
You all know.
That way we can go get something to help out from the charity account.
So if you don't know, the soup kitchen is a viable asset to the community. Every day they feed Monday through Friday. They also have started doing breakfast. It's right down on Pennsylvania Six. Not only people who are unsheltered go there, people who have jobs with kids. It's just a place to get a meal and save a little bit of money. And they do a cooling station when it's over a hundred, I think. And they will do a warming station in the winter just so people have a place to kind of recoup the weather, but I'll share it to the commissioners.
We, we did take them some stuff the other day because they had done it. I guess it's a key hint to explain too.
Yes.
So, but if I don't see it on Facebook, we don't, we don't know what to do something. So if we have something, let us know. We can help that out maybe.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, and the team is great. The Kim, the two Kims, the Laura's.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kim.
Um, yeah, our guys have just been super busy and along with the, all the, we had a structure fire Saturday night, vehicle fire Friday. They also did training yesterday and the one in LA, they were out on training from two o'clock till ten o'clock. That's not because they started control one, so. I had to sit with it. And then the house of high train that far away yesterday. Do have a board meeting tomorrow night. Hopefully we'll have a forum. And I did get the financials out and I'll have the agenda out today by the time I go home.
Thank you, Kim. Bobby?
Well, we did have one of the reportable injury last week. I did a safety meeting with the assistant's office last week and the election board this morning. And we'll be conducting one with the treasurer's office later this week. I also will be conducting safety orientation for our temporary personnel in the construction department tomorrow morning. Um, and then besides that, there are just some areas in item three where I did some work. That's all I have for you guys.
I did have one follow on. The fire team will have a booth at the Grady County Fair, so remind everybody this week is fair, food, fun, yeah.
It's gonna be fun.
Hot cakes, or is that funnel cakes is what I love. It's probably not good for you.
Item number ten, discussion and possible action on the report and work orders from the construction superintendent.
I don't have anything that needs approved, but they are putting the flagpole in today at OSHU extension. And then they just delivered all the materials to the new office, to the sheriff's building. That was their thirty minutes heads up. Hey, I'm here. After I sent Rick to Elick. And I'm on vacation starting tomorrow until the following Tuesday. So my emails are going to Sydney and my phones are going to Rick.
So you'll be back on Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday, Tuesday morning, maybe.
We will come find you.
Okay, item eleven, public comments. No one to sign up anybody. Any speak, nobody. Item number twelve, new business in accordance with Open Meeting Act Title 25 upon statutes three, eleven, eight, nine. New business is defined as any matter not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda.
I got nothing.
Item thirteen, discussion and possible approval and signing of the deed for delment opinion, TID twenty-three, seven, thirteen, C zero, zero, one, dash, zero, zero, dash, two, eight, eight, dash, zero, zero, two, dash, zero, dash, zero, 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 dash, zero, zero.
I think we need to take no action. We're talking about that tomorrow. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Item fourteen. Discussion and possible approval of transcript of proceeding on the sale of county property to JCVS RET LLC. On county property, parcel ID number C zero, zero, one, dash, zero, zero, dash, two, zero, eight, dash, zero, zero, four, dash, zero, dash, zero, zero, one, dash, zero, zero. TID number two, three, zero, four, seven, in the amount of three thousand, six hundred, fourteen dollars, sixty-nine cents.
Is this the House of twelve, twenty-two Florida? I'll make a motion to approve.
Gary?
Yes.
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 I'll be taking that off of this.
Yeah, it says on that agreement that there's a pending settlement.
Yeah, and I, I talked to the young man that's doing the voting from LSI, so he was aware that that would probably be coming off.
Item number fifteen, discussion and possible action on the Grady County and Sheriff's Department's telecom system.
So a long time ago, I think the only one that might remember this was Zach. We came forward with Stolz changing where if they called in on our oh nine, eight, four number in dispatch, that the people, the dispatchers could transfer it to our extensions within the office. Well. When you do that now, it shows up that dispatch is calling. It doesn't show up who's calling. Stolz thought they could do that. Well, I think the price was a little high when we brought it before the board, if I remember. So then the next question was, for y'all to became commissioners, that what would it cost to get the whole county where? Could transfer, like if I got a call for you, I could transfer it to your barn or to her barn or to the treasurer's office, whatever. We would all be hooked together as far as Grady County. I think that's where it kind of stopped because then they needed to know all of the phone numbers as far as all the different lines. How many lines you have come in, your office, your office, your office, et cetera. So I think that's where, which I, as Sydney, I think that's gonna be a thing that they're gonna have to work with, like industry systems on y'alls. Because I think that's who, like, does all your phones, you release all your phones from or whatever, especially here in the courthouse. I don't know about the barns.
So why wouldn't we just have industry systems do it? Why wouldn't we just have industry systems do, the phones are already here.
Because of our.
Let them do yours.
Our nine-one-one system. We've got to be able to tap into that nine-one-one system because right now we have two separate phone systems.
Yeah.
And they literally have to run across the office to grab one phone and then put it back.
Can industry systems not do that? I'm just saying the majority of phones.
They wasn't good with the sheriff's office several years ago. There was a sideways thing.
Okay.
Yes.
But there's new people in there.
Okay.
And so to me, to me.
I got sideways with them.
Okay, it, to me, it would be difficult. I mean, well, I'm just gonna say, to me, to change all the phones here. To make it work for y'all, it would be on, if you're gonna get a new phone, it would be better, I think, to make all the phones work with what we've got.
We can call them and ask them to come out and tell us. And the only deal I said to the sheriff and the undersheriff the other day was. If it's not, if it's not gonna change anything, when a call comes in on oh nine, eight, four, or one of those sidelines, and they transfer, if it's not gonna show you who's calling. Either anonymous or. and they transfer, if it's not gonna show you who's calling, either anonymous or a person in a number, then there's no sense in doing anything.
Yeah.
If they're just gonna add another phone.
Yeah, I can tell you when the treasures office used to call to people out about collecting taxes, sometimes it would show, uh, spam or something on those people's ends, but I don't know who all has industry systems, but I know the whole courthouse does, Katrina, and they do, so.
No, we're correct.
We're, yeah.
Oh, oh, no, that or not, that's.
Well, we got some kinda weird glue, something out of Florida, I mean, it's a weird host, weird situation. They're terrible, that, I, it's whoever the service company that does our phones, the phones are good, but I just think if you're gonna do something, you need to look at who's in here already and let them see if they can do what they're needing done, instead of changing everything at a cost, especially when we're fixing to re-renovate.
Yeah, I, we just said put it on discussion to see what your thought was now, cause you two were new, the only one that was around, I think, might remember was Zach, so that's.
Seems like part of the problem was, we didn't really know what phone lines we had, period, there was no idea. There was some discussion after that, that we actually found some deadlines.
Supposed to get a price, they were supposed to get all of our phone numbers. So they would get a price and they never got.
Right, and then they never got the phone numbers, and then it just kinda, whatever, so it kinda went dead.
Yeah. Cause for y'all alone, it was pretty pricey.
It was, yeah, it was pricey.
Thirty-two or thirty-five.
I had like, almost forty in my mind for, for just y'all.
Yeah.
Well, we'll call out there and see who's out there now and see if Industry Systems wants to come and talk to us, see what they say, then we'll go from there.
Does, how much does this, on your nine-one-one consoles and stuff, how much does that, who ha, I guess, my question.
A T and T handles the whole console deal, and that's because of the nine-one-one lines that come into it.
Stolz maintained that.
Oh, you're Stolz maintaining?
That was, that was my.
But it's through A T and T.
Yeah.
Where the rest of our lines, the five oh eight five and three or four other rollover numbers on that, is through Alliance.
So what conf- what concerns me about not involving Stolz in this is, is the crossover there on the nine-one-one consoles, that concerns me a little bit, without having Stolz involved.
Cause you have to be able to have those nine-one-one, they have to, and they're dedicated through A T and T, I believe, right?
Yeah, we have fiber, and then, you know, it comes in on the Alliance fiber, but we have backup copper.
Okay, I just wanna check to see if Industry Systems can do what Stolz is doing, I have no idea, I just.
What just concerns me about having.
Stolz is gonna have to work with industry systems.
Industry systems, kinda like TM works with the treasures office on, so TM and Industry Service Systems work together with the treasure software to make it work. So it would be, yes, making them work together, but to me, it would be less, a lot less expensive to work that one with Stolz than try to do all new phones for the whole county.
Yeah, if you wanna connect the courthouse.
If you wanna connect the courthouse.
It may be a thing you don't wanna do.
I mean, it may not, it may be, it may be.
Maybe to whatever, because then you gotta have, who's gonna actually, you know, unless they call a separate number.
Yeah, who do y'all have? Do you know who?
We just got the front one phone line, we ain't got that whole, we ain't, we ain't got a system.
Yeah. Yeah, I got some kind of.
You got one phone.
I got one phone.
Okay.
If you call, it's busy, call back.
Okay.
Take it off the hook. Sam. Did it? Okay, item number sixteen, discussion and possible action on the table item for awarding of a bid for the rebidding of concrete to the fence portion of the Grady County, originally bid twenty-four five zero zero seven.
This is what we opened last week. We'll go with Walsh on the low bid.
We just said the low bid.
Yes, the only difference, the work will be the same, only any of the Walsh's was cheaper on every line item as far as cost to do it.
Which one?
Walsh, I'll make a motion to accept Walsh as long as.
Set it, yeah.
I mean, just every line item was a couple grand cheaper all of them down though.
Yes.
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 Okay, item number seventeen, discussion and possible action on opening a building in the bid for Grady County, just in three zero eight, forty-five feet by twenty feet by sixteen feet. Okay, this is big Turner Weld Incorporated, signed and dated, and the amount will be forty thousand five hundred.
You need to sign that, because the first bid that you just put in there. I'm just gonna sign it, I'm sorry, I just saw a sticky thing in your box, thinking you were taking it down to your office.
Second bid, the whole electric, signed and dated. Fifteen thousand one forty? It's just for electric, oh.
It's a long ride from.
Isn't that personal?
This is just for building and the concrete.
Well, it does have the concrete.
Yeah.
Let me figure out this, uh, Harold Service Group Electric. Signed and dated. Fourteen thousand five hundred.
I mean, that's over, but it works. How about that? I even got the bank on it.
It works. Willflow Plumbing LLC, signed and dated. Total price fourteen thousand, no, correction, final fifteen thousand thirty-nine fifty.
We won't take it until next week, but I will be here Monday.
Hey Sydney, you look over it with Sydney and she can.
So you have thirty days to award it all, yes?
Yeah.
You surely have a lot to do about it in days, I'm sure.
I mean, we only got one bid on each part of the project, so we can go with a low bid.
I guess my big deal is, you wanna make sure that they all need specs, so.
I bet with a little matter right down there, I feel confident we are, but we can.
Up to you.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Up to YouTube.
Yeah, there you go.
Man, we only got one bid for each trade, so, other than electric, we can go a low bid on electric. We got plumbing electric and metal building down, then I'll do the rest.
What do you trust?
I say we accept low bid on electric and then Turner and Willflow for plumbing and other things.
Okay, I'll make a motion then.
I'll second that motion.
And Turner's, does it include the concrete? Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Okay, item number eighteen, discussion and possible approval of a day in hiring policy in regards to medical exams and pre-employment fees.
I put this on there, cause it seems like the last few people that we've hired, it's taken eight, ten days to get them through the process, and after I was kinda read the hiring policy multiple times, it doesn't say we can't do this, but I've always been told that we can't. So what I wanna do is, I wanna schedule an appointment for them to get their medical, send them to get a drug test, get their medical, and enroll them. That way when the drug test comes back, they can come to work and shorten the, shorten the time down to get them on.
The reason we've done it the other way is because if the drug test comes back, uh, then you're wasting them, and that was the reason we did that.
I think that's just the cost of doing business sometimes, I mean, everybody knows that they drug test when they come to work here, and I think that we need to put a little trust in the person that we're hiring and ourselves to be able to get somebody that's, but waiting eight to ten days is ridiculous to get somebody on.
Yeah, and I, I talked to Grady Memorial, and they're supposed to get back to me, but they do have a satellite office in Rush Springs and one in Tuttle, and she's supposed to get back to me and let me know if they can do the drug test for the pre-employment that they, um, she, she's gonna give me a call back, she called me and asked me how many we have, and I said it's not gonna be like, it's gonna be a whole bunch. Um, but she's supposed to call and let me know back, but.
Well, the drug test, the drug test is takes, takes four to three to five days to get back, that's.
And, and. And mine's never taken that long.
Yeah, it does hurt, though, when you, when you've got somebody that's employed somewhere else and they have to take off twice.
Yeah, yeah, and then having to drive down here twice to do it, and. Right.
So they're gonna do it all at once?
Uh, that's what I wanna do, I, I, I mean, I hope it's a cost.
Uh, well, Motion Works does part of it, and then, they don't make appointments for the drug tests, but they do make the appointments for the pre-employment, so you could do the pre-employment, tell the person to get there an hour early and do the drug test, it's a walk-in on the drug test. Uh, Grady Memorial's supposed to let me know what they'll, they're willing to do.
So are we gonna change this policy?
I mean, the way that the policy's wrote, it don't say you can't do it like that, but I just wanna square the budget.
Should we make that policy and go ahead and put it in?
I'm fine with that.
So we'll need to write that up and change that.
I mean, I just think it should, shorten the hiring span by three or four days.
But we're not clear on who we're using, or we are clear on who we're using, or not?
Well, I'm going to continue to use Motion Works, cause invalid, cause it's right there, but I called to see if there was somebody else that could do it, I did call Grady to see if they had, so that Zach and them don't have to drive up here, Gary and them don't have to drive down here.
Can we just put her official, who, who's in?
Yeah.
I don't know why we couldn't.
Okay, yeah.
But if we can do it all at one swipe, I don't have a problem, I mean, I don't have a problem with driving down here, but.
We just encountered people, we had, I got a call from one district, we had a, we had an employee that could not do his, his physical because he hadn't, he's, he was injured before, so he had to go back and do, uh, get a re- a release from his doctor before he can do that. And as Jill said, this is more of an expense to the county to save money, I mean, you know, uh, if you wanna go through little steps, it's always up to the elected officials discretion, whatever you guys wanna do, but this was just done, and with Motion Works, it's so hard, uh, because there, we have, we have three D E Rs with Clarence House, we have the non-D O Ts that I'll take care of, and so they're having to shift all these different, uh, results to different people.
I don't think we have to change the random, I think we would leave the random.
No, 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 I'm talking even, even with the pre-employment, so I'm having to trace, okay, who is this guy, where did he come from? And when I get the results, and I don't know if you guys get the non-D O T results on pre-employment.
I, I do, yeah.
Okay, cause I've had, I think at one time I've had a couple call and say, have you heard anything from this person?
Was it as easy as getting yourself on the.
Right, right, so, as Jill said, I mean, it was more of a, a saving cost to the county, if the guy didn't pass his re- uh, his drug test, then you wouldn't have to spend extra money on the physical, you know.
But I do think what Zach's saying is if you, we can narrow it down to one time, he doesn't mind using, driving down to Motion Works.
No, I don't mi- I don't mind them doing that, cause they're gonna come down here anyway, so, but it, it's easier when they're trying to put their two weeks notice in, to take off, tell your boss, hey, I gotta go do this on like two weeks, well then, and also recently, we've had, uh, two people that hired that needed to come to work, well, one of them was delayed like twelve days from the time he took the drug test till the time he, he came into work, well, that's not fair to them either, when you're trying, when you're sitting there, you ain't drawing a paycheck.
I think that happens a lot if the person has a, a medical benefit, the doctor, cause I don't know that it's Motion Works, it's the doctor.
Well, Motion Works is taking five days to get your drug test.
Cause I have had that happen before.
Yeah.
And that's.
And usually it takes them to try to reach that person to say, hey, can you give me some information on these prescription that you're taking? Cause they're not gonna reach you guys, they're not gonna reach me, they're gonna reach the person that did the drug test.
But still, what I'm saying is it takes five days to get a drug test pack.
Correct, correct.
But.
Now, I guess I have, I have another question, so they do the works test, then they do the drug test, are we gonna go ahead and hire them without the drug test release?
I mean, I think you go ahead and get them enrolled, and then when the drug test comes back, then they come to work.
But what if the drug test comes back and we've already started working them?
Well, they wouldn't start until.
They wouldn't start till the drug test. But they wouldn't have to wait another three or four days to do the work study, the work thing, that's what the deal is, is a lot of times the work study takes another three to five days to get it scheduled.
After you get the results back on the drug test, then you gotta get scheduled.
Yeah, so sometimes.
Cause they don't have, they don't have somebody to do it every day, and they kinda have to pin it under their schedule, and so.
And that's.
Sydney said something I wanna say for the whole ten minutes, so.
Okay, so, but you enroll them, say you enroll someone on the thirtieth, their insurance goes into effect on the first, what if their drug test is hot? And then you're gonna pay insurance for them on zone shift.
Cost of doing business.
Yeah.
Well, and the oth- and the other thing is if, if you're wanting to shift their.
Well, I, I mean, I hope, I would hope, I'm crazy, that we were, were hiring people that were not, I mean, they know when they're coming in that they're gonna take a drug test. So I would hope that between the hiring, the people that's doing the hiring and the person that's going, knowing, that they pop hot, they're not gonna take a drug, they're not gonna work for us.
I think what Zach's saying is they're just filling out their paperwork, they're still not going to be totally finished, they could come in and fill out their paperwork, they're still not gonna be totally finished till that drug test comes back, but they would be totally finished.
Right.
So instead of taking the drug test, passing, and then waiting another three or four days, cause I had this with one of my guys, it was four days before they could get him in for his work steps, where if we could schedule it all in one, if they are currently working, they could get it done. But they would not actually come to work till that drug test came back, we just would.
The, the other option that, that I can see, I don't know if this is possible, but they come enroll the day they come to work.
Right.
And, you know. And, you know, so the drug test comes back, they could, they start on the first, the first thing they do is when the courthouse comes down, they come down and enroll that day. And they'll get paid, their own county time, and they can do that.
I mean, that's what they do at courthouse.
Yeah, mine took eight days, including the weekend, because of that. The other thing I'll just share with you is I'm on the board of South Central Medical Resource Center, they do all rural communities. So I could just have them reach out to you, to you, ma'am, or one of you, to see if there is a place that can do streamline.
And, and see, we need them to be able, whoever does it, they need to be able to do that pre-employment test too.
All of it, right. So it's just a thought, but mine took a weekend plus eight days. It was a lot.
Yeah, that yours, yours, yours one reason I put this, put this on there.
And luckily, I don't have to issue, in my case, of the two weeks notice.
Yeah.
I came in out of retirement.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's my, that's my opinion on it, and maybe it's, they enroll, and maybe it's a deal where they come down and enroll, and Bobby can do his, his new employer orientation. They enroll all in the same day, and it's just a streamlined deal, or we're not trying to schedule other things.
I feel like they should be getting paid to enroll.
I do too, yes.
But our guys, our people do, when they come in to work that first day.
There's, there's, there, there is a, um, I don't know what's, but there is something with the, the orientation and all that, uh, the enrollment.
It'll take.
They're, they're getting paid for that.
Yeah, I mean, they, yeah, yeah, but they would know when they pa- I mean, they could do their drug test, do the pre-employment. When they pa- when they calls and they say they passed, you send them down.
My thing is, and, and this will be the last, is if, for whatever reason, something would have happened, and they already gave their two weeks notice, knowing they're gonna get their job. And something happens, then they can't go back, and well, maybe they can, for employees, and they're gonna say, well, it didn't work out with this, and I have my job back.
That should be far a few between.
How many, how many does Zach have on his mind? He enrolled in everything.
Sure, he showed up his first day of work, his two week, or put his notice in, and quit on his first day.
Too hard.
That's why, that's why we have procedures and policies.
I thought it was on you, but it's on the override.
But at the end of the day, it's always gonna be there with the officials' decision, you know, we're, we're gonna just inform you, I can only inform you some of the possibilities.
I mean, I'm, I've, I've stated my piece, I think.
Yeah, I, I feel like I've had, I mean, I did have one employee that it took, he had to take off twice, and worked in Elbrun, you know, he'd come down, do the drug test, and then he had to do, I had, I mean, I guess what happens is that they fail, they fail, they know they don't have a job, I mean. That we just wouldn't start them until, that maybe all of them would get back at the same time, they could do that, you would know. Uh, because you wouldn't wanna hire them and then, then get hurt, and they have something on there, so, I mean, you wouldn't hire them till. But chances are, they would get the drug test and the pre-employment all done at the same time, we'd get the bo- the results, both results at the same time. I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
And then, and then they come down to.
Then they enroll on the first day.
For the insurance. I mean, my thing is, is they find out they passed at twelve o'clock in the afternoon, they can come down and roll, get on the time and start.
Well, I mean, if they have the slot, it would be, it would be that.
Yeah, I think that would be a, a case, I think we need a freedom to do that.
It would be a case, yeah, yeah.
And, and I don't know, like, like I said, the girl at the hospital wasn't sure about the, the pre-employment kind of work step thing. Which, you know, if we change this, then it might make it better, they could go to Motion Works and get, and if we keep having trouble with the drug test, we may just have to do that somewhere else.
Is it pre-employment?
Did you check out there at, at Five Buck's where you go for like organs comp?
Well, I called, I, I called, uh, Beth Holt out there, she takes care of all the clinical, and she was gonna get back to, she got back to me once to ask a few questions, and she was gonna get.
I think maybe the walk-in bill you might go to do.
Yeah, I just don't know if they do the pre-employment thing, and that's what she was checking on, and we didn't know if they could do it at Rush and Tuttle to cut down Gary and Zach's time.
Yeah, but like I said, I don't want them driving down here if we can wipe it all out of the damn thing. But I think on that, on the enrollment, it needs to say on or before the first day of employment. That way, if it does stand in, where it can come and roll prior, prior to, then they can do that.
Once the drug test.
Like, if their drug test come back on the third day, they wanna come, they wanna come enroll on Friday, and they start on a Monday.
Uh-huh.
However, you wanna work that.
Have to get paid for this.
After their drug test is.
You just have them, I think, yeah, you have to, you have to tell how many hours you were here. Going up your paperwork.
Well, on the Fridays, they're only gonna be with the two, oh, yeah.
But it's not like there's, we're not gonna hire thirty people one day.
No.
I mean.
No, no.
To the park, I mean, it's not that many.
Well, I'll make a motion to change the policy, please, please.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Free?
Yes.
See you.
I probably will write this, uh, the notice of that, and then we'll break the resolution through next time to put it on the notice.
Okay.
Item number nineteen, discussion and possible approval of updating Old Grady County permit applications.
This is also me, um, we have, we, our permits were all originally wrote for oil and gas stuff. Uh, and our friends in the, in the renewable energy sector have been doing a lot of work up there for us, and they're just, we've been kind of making a stretch to make our old permits work, so I got with Keely last week, and Keely kind of merged some of our stuff with McLean County. Um, where we have, we'll have three permits now, um, instead of the driveway, tin horn, pipeline crossing permits and separate permits, they're all one. Um, the encroachment, um, I don't know what it's called, application for pipeline crossing, line installation, or other private encroachment or work or more within county highway system, that, that will be good for pipeline crossings, driveways, tin horns, um, high line wires, you name it, but that permit will cover it. Um, and then we've been having several questions about public utility road crossings. Um, and what we've been doing is making them fill out a, fill out a permit, and then just wave them a fee, well, the way that this, this is, it will actually have a permit for public utilities that isn't a paid permit. We don't draw it up. Um, and then I left the fast line permit the same, um, since it's a temporary, the, the encroachments were nine times out of ten, they're not temporary, they're permanent. So I wanted to up that to forty-five hundred dollars for permanent, since it's most of it, instead of the permit stuff. Um, and then I left the fast line permit to be three thousand, since it's usually just a temporary, temporary line. We've been having some confusion enough and worse with our permits, so I, me and Keely put our heads together and come up with something a little bit simpler.
So forty-five on the.
On the, on this review of private encroachments.
Okay.
This will cover pipeline crossings, high line, high lines, driveways, this covered everything, and it'll be forty-five hundred dollars.
Three thousand, three thousand.
And three thousand for the fast line.
Three thousand?
I hadn't yet, I wasn't seeing if there was any, I'm seeing if there's any discussion from the peanut go.
John?
I'll make a motion to approve six permits.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Free?
Yes.
Are you, are these just the permits that you're gonna use? Or are you actually?
There should be a res- I would've thought there'd been a, there was a resolution to change. Yeah, they are just the ones, I was, I would've thought there would be a resolution, yeah, these are just the ones that we were gonna use.
We, we, oh, but I was gonna say, I was gonna sign this, so we need, I guess, all the volumes, and we can get a copy, so we're.
Uh, Keely's, uh, Keely's put it on the website.
Okay.
There is one radical area that we found in there, it's no big deal, it's not gonna change the structure of it, but there's longer medical area, I have it highlighted somewhere in the paperwork here.
Item twenty, discussion and possible approval of a road use and maintenance agreements between Grady County and Rumble Energy Storage LLC.
It's for a new project that they're doing up there, uh, out west in Minko, uh, we, we've approved multiple road usage agreements. Uh, the only thing that needs to be changed, and it can be wrote in, is, is contact for Grady County, it states Randy Ely in the agreement, and it needs to be changed to Mike Chester. Um, and Mike's phone number added to that, I didn't catch it until this morning, but it's fine to write it in, I think, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I didn't catch it till this morning, at six thirty.
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Free?
Yes.
Well, just coming out of retirement.
I was like, Randy's gonna be doing something, of course.
I don't know where it's at now. I seen it on my computer this morning.
Maybe it's on the, the third page, or second page.
Yeah, right there.
Okay, item twenty-one, discussion and possible approval of a preventive maintenance agreements between Dixon Power Services and Grady County District Four.
This is for our generator in our new building, it's just a yearly maintenance agreement, like what we do at our generator down here, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, item twenty-two.
Yes.
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 Discussion and possible approval of an agreement from Grady County and Life Skills Institute for bi-weekly mowing and weed eating resale properties.
Um, this is the property that's up for sale through the treasurer's office, the commissioner of properties that got given to us in the sales, and there's money in her resale fund to mow those, and so Life Skills held us the best price. Uh, we will be taking one of these off, uh, Carolyn will be doing that, paying for that out of her, so.
You wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Item twenty-three, discussion and possible approval of a declaration of disposal of equipment in accordance with nineteen of statute three thirty-nine and four twenty-one, three four twenty-one, twenty-two, for the top city station, Grady County Fire Department.
This is a wooden utility slash storage building, um, according to Brian, the district chief in that part, so the roof has fallen, sheet rocks off the walls, it's just sustained too much damage to the, any sort of positive structure. And Sid, um, he also visited with Dale, and I guess Dale had, in like the late nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, had got a grant for this. And, um, you know, we just felt like we needed to be surplus, since then, they've built their new structure out there, and they use it for the storage that was originally in this. And once left in that, that's any good, they'll move it to the other building.
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
Item.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Free?
Yes.
Item twenty-four, discussion and possible approval of disposal of equipment for OSU extension in accordance with the provision set forth in Title nineteen, section four twenty-one. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say that.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Free?
Yes.
Item twenty-five, discussion and possible action to rescind all prior no commercial truck route resolutions in District One.
So we were trying to make a map for, for, uh, not only the truck company, but for the sheriff's office, and we pulled every resolution, and there was probably twenty-five or thirty resolutions in total, a lot of them didn't even have numbers or anything that were old, that didn't make sense. The only thing that really, way that I could see to fix it was to rescind all those resolutions, and add a new resolution on all of them. So I'll make a motion to rescind all those resolutions prior to today's date.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
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 Item twenty-six, discussion and possible action on approving new no commercial truck routes in District One.
This will be the new updated resolution, uh, with all of them on, all of the truck routes on one resolution, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Just one quick question, if you don't mind, this has no impact on the haul route provided for the.
No, it's not, I don't think there's nothing, we can't give you forbidden business on it anyways. Yeah, it's, uh, it's mainly for east of, east of, uh, town, so.
We'll comply with whatever you need us to, if you're respective, just let me know.
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Free?
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-seven, discussion and possible approval of a L dot form, three twenty-four A, for the payment to Amy Fowler and Daniel Ray Fowler, Jr. for the temporary easement and any and all damages as part of the paid, uh, point one twenty-three acres, one point twenty-three acres in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars, project J three, thirty-three, five, fifty-two, zero, zero, four, C one.
Uh, this is for, this was a counter offer that was made on, on a prior, uh, offer that they'd done, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Free?
Yes.
I think this matches your style of bridge.
Item twenty-eight, discussion and possible approval of utility pipeline road crossing permits, waterline, fast line permits, and driveway tenon permits.
Is that the liquor?
Yeah, Western Farming White, which I'm letting you call.
Sorry, I'll circle around, I'll make sure, I'll hang around that one. I'll have you there.
John?
Item twenty-nine.
Do you make a motion? Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Free?
Yes.
Okay, discussion and possible approval of county officer monthly reports.
That is two from OSU, two different ones, but you don't sign anything that has to run with yourself, though.
Do we make a motion to approve, motion to approve?
Make a motion, yes.
She made a motion.
Okay, I'll say it.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Free? Yes. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Nope, I'm sorry.
We didn't do the transfers.
Okay.
You just signed them.
Okay, I'm like, we're signing them, I'm like, done.
Get them now.
Zach's ready? Any motion on the transfer, sorry, did you even read, did you read it?
No.
Okay, read it.
Uh, you always want to be, discussion and possible approval, this for needs, request for appropriations and transfer appropriations.
I make a motion.
I'll say it, okay. Ready?
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I make a motion to adjourn.
Say it again.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
All right.